The bid specification. And then we boiled it down to follow it in terms of all three of those system components. And that five-year cost, I wanted to give you a sense of how this breaks out. So, the library management, as you can see on this slide, you can see the library management in the first column, the textbook and materials management in the second, and then the annual totals. You'll notice that the first year is heavily weighted. You can expect that because we will be making a transition from our current library management system, and we would be implementing two additional pieces. Implementation costs are the primary thing that you're seeing there. So, in that regard, years two through five are where you get a true sense of what your year-over-year costs are going to be. So, in this regard, I wanted to just point out that if we did absolutely nothing and stayed where we were with our current vendor, we would spend, as you see in the red, about So, in that regard, if we look at the difference between each of those lines, the difference that's now in the green column shows what we would spend in addition. And again, you see the largest amount of dollars that we're spending over and above what we already are are clearly in the first year. To that end, when you say, "Well Kirk, how would we pay for this?" In talking with Dr. Standish and Dr. Stavum, and with Mary Ryman, who runs the library services environment as the director, and with J.D. Miller, who has heavily invested, obviously, in textbooks and instructional materials, the thought was, in looking at it, we had depreciation reserve that we could use to offset that large chunk in year one to get us through that implementation. And then, in years two through five, we have about $38,000 that we would need to find. Through the budget process and in looking at that, that money has been identified in the co-op fund. I won't try to explain to you exactly what the co-op fund is because it gets a little bit difficult, and I would always depend on either Sherri Steiskel or Dr. Standish to do that. But suffice to say, the dollars are there to make up that difference. I just wanted to point out that that difference, if you look at it in just the library management, equates to $3,200 in years two through five, each of those years. If we boil that down to an amount per student, that's eight cents per student per year. That's a fairly modest amount to get an updated library management system that provides a much better interface. It is widely considered to be the industry leader and increasingly the standard. It provides federated search, so across our instructional materials, it provides students to look across those, not just sort of at one thing at a time. So, in that regard, it is widely considered to be a much better system. And in years two through five, at an addition of eight cents per student, that seemed to be a fairly modest increase over what we would otherwise spend anyway. And then if we take that and we look over into the entire system, over the entire system that in years two through five, we would be spending essentially 96 cents per student more in years two through five. When you consider that for that cost of 96 cents per student total, we would be getting an updated library management system, as well as a textbook management system to manage what is definitely millions of dollars in investment in textbooks, both print and electronic, as well as instructional materials, it would seem to me to be an absolutely excellent buy in that regard. To the extent that we also, outside of getting over that first-year expense with depreciation, would be finding this within budget resources, I think, again, it represents an excellent way for us to provide the type of management necessary to be good stewards and get the absolute best out of what we spend. So, that sort of is the presentation on that. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Don and Annie?
Please.
Well, as a member of the Technology Committee, besides the fact that you make fabulous graphics, but it helps really break down the whole idea, I think that really just shows, we've really been speaking through this for several months now. This is not a brand-new, "Oh, this would be a great idea." And I think I have asked the question, like especially all three of these, like, "Why all three of these? Why now?" And you had an excellent answer the other day, so I'm going to ask you that. I mean, to me, especially at the same time, I also want to add that this just makes perfect sense to me in the sense that we have expended a large amount of money into joining the 21st century. And this is a way that now we need to keep track of it in a 21st-century possibility. And no matter what we do, we have to keep track of all of these materials, so we're going to be paying out money one way or the other. It's just been a very interesting and very thorough process of figuring it out. But I still would like you, you know, why, you know, all of these all now? I mean, if we've been making do since 1999, why do we have to change?
Well, I think one of the things is, is that technology doesn't stand still, and neither do we. And in a growing district, we are taking in new types of materials all of the time. We didn't have the number of Chromebooks that we have now before. We didn't have the number of projectors. Band instruments grow. The number of textbooks obviously grow. We also have textbooks that are in print but haven't exceeded their life expectancy, but we can't get them any longer. So, what that forces us to do is to be very frugal with where those are located. You can spend a considerable amount of time trying to figure out amongst 38 elementary schools, where are these books, and how can I shore these up and make sure that I'm using them most efficiently and moving them around? This allows you to do that. So, this doesn't play against helping our staff to work the most efficiently that they can, allowing teachers to spend less time counting and more time teaching, allowing administrators to spend less time tracking things down and more times tracking around with the students and working with teachers. So, in terms of why this "Why now?", this particular system, it's simply a matter of, I think, being good stewards of the dollars that we set, as you indicated. It is also because if we are going to continue to build these things out, we're not going to have, in a growing district, we won't have more, or we won't have less, we will almost always have more, and it's doing a better job of that. But also, it is because when it comes to something like the library management component, which is new, but it's actually just, it's just different. It's a matter of looking and saying, "How do we best serve students? How do we best serve teachers? How do we get them to the most appropriate materials as quickly as possible?" And so, in that regard, it's picking a system that's capable of doing precisely that. In this case, I have every confidence in Mary Ryman and her staff for having looked through this and said, "You know, this is really the best way to do that." And researching it around other districts in the state, whether that is Omaha Public Schools, or Milner, or others, who have taken on the same system, to know and talk with their colleagues about the very best thing, the very best way to serve our students. If we're going to have an investment, let's make sure it's the best one that it can be. As far as the other two things, as I said, the mail gateway product is a renewal. It comes up. I think the most important thing we can do is first ask ourselves, "Is it something we still need?" And I think I've demonstrated, and I think some of you know, clearly, it's not something we want to go without. But when we're going to do that, rather than just succeed it by doing the same thing we've always done, we make sure we look at it and see if it's the best thing to continue to do. And in this case, we felt that it was. And then lastly, with respect to the web filter, that's a matter of really looking at it and saying, "Okay, we're going to have to make an investment because we're going to have to meet that quantitative standard that's growing." In order to do that, are there other things that drag along with it? Sure, those qualitative ones you mentioned as well. But when we're doing that, let's make sure that we don't, you know, spend more money than we have to spend, and that we get the products that's going to truly meet our needs. So, this is kind of the ongoing piece. Unfortunately, it is the case that anything that is technology-based wears out over time. Sometimes it is, sometimes it is one of those phones or one of those tablets that, even though it seemed like the greatest thing when we got it, boy, after just two or three years, or whatever it may be for us as individuals, we've just got to have another one. I think we're much more frugal than that, and we try to take things as long as we possibly can. But what we don't want to do is compromise and either spend more money because we won't look at change, or we put ourselves in a position where we're just not providing the service that we need to. In all of these, I feel confident that we're doing it at the right time, under the right circumstances, and we're staying out ahead of it rather than having to react from behind.
Thank you. Don, Matt, and Don?
Annie, something.
Okay, Don, or Matt, sorry.
So, the depreciation, you got that nice red box around depreciation. So, that portion of this is being paid out of the depreciation fund, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I would defer to Dr. Standish on...
That is correct.
So, is this an expense that we were expecting from our depreciation fund?
This is something we've been looking at, as Kirk shared, you know, especially with moving to Chromebooks, having content management, having textbook management, all of those things are really important. So, we did appropriate some funds in last year's budget, and then we have some funds in the depreciation fund. So, the co-op fund would be able to fund the ongoing expense. And the first year, the higher expense, the portion that would be unallowable depreciation fund experience could come from there.
Okay.
I have a couple questions or comments. Having worked with students who've been able to maneuver their way around our filters, I like that you've got a system that's a little more, a little more guts to the system because the kids are pretty smart, and they know how to get around a lot of the stuff that we take for granted in technology. As I looked at the library management, and you depreciated or costed it out for five years, at the sixth year, do we have to start all over, or are we going to just have that maintenance fee similar to when you upgrade a Windows program or something for people at home so they can understand it? Is it going to be that lower cost at the end of five, or are we going to start all over again with high first year and then four additional years? Or do we know?
The only way that we would endure high, we would do that, or have that higher fee would be if we, for some reason, decided that we needed to change systems. If not for that, we certainly at that point would negotiate to get the very best deal we could for ongoing, essentially, license maintenance and so on. So, I would anticipate, in terms of that, I would not anticipate unless we moved away that we would have a high year one, like we did here in year six.
And the second question is on how staff would use it. Been around a day or two, and I used to help my daughters, I have three of them that are educators, when they catalog school or books at the end of the year. And we'd carry them, and they'd open them up, and they'd look at the number on the back, and then they'd check it off on a list, or it might be on calculators or other items that they were responsible for in their buildings. I'm going to make an assumption, so are there going to be barcodes and scanners that make this easy for staff members to use?
Yes, and so, we really have two, we really have sort of two different pieces. One would be to work with vendors that, as we would be bringing in textbooks, so that they come in barcoded, so we can very easily bring those into the system, so we don't have to go through a manual process to do so. Then, obviously, we have a fairly significant backlog of books. What we would intend to do with that is focus on those that tend to have the highest mobility and that we really need to be very careful with to make sure that we have enough. That's where we would start the process, and then over time, bring those in bit by bit.
Well, what I'm remembering, this goes back into my parent days, so some of you guys aren't that old. But I remember, even for my own child, when she was in high school, somebody, she turns a book in, somebody misses one number, they write the wrong number down, I get a bill for a book. So, for parents, this is a better system because it will help staff catalog them more accurately. So, when your kid says, "Nope, I left it on the desk," and they, "I saw him barcode it," it might have gotten the wrong pile, but it's going to be somewhere in the system that it was okay.
Right, and so, from, right, so from that perspective, it just helps us, it helps us be more accurate, just like you see now, they take inventory all the time, even when you're in the stores, they're taking inventory. It's sort of like that, we can, we'll be able to do it in a much, much more accurate and efficient fashion.
Perfect. Any other questions? I think we're ready for the vote, April. And this is for all three items, just to remind my colleagues. Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Moving on, we have informational items and reports from board committees. It's the summer school program, and I believe that's Ms. Mumgarth's committee.
It is. I think we all need to take a deep breath for all the heavy building we've been doing tonight. We've been talking about a lot of the buildings and their renovations. Let's talk about what goes on inside them for a little bit. As Chair of the Student Learning Committee, and I serve with Ms. Duncan and Mr. Boswell, we had a recent committee meeting, and we thought that there were a lot of things we were talking about that we really needed to get out there, a little bit as public notice, as well as what's going on. And the first one would be talking about our high school summer school plans, and I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Stavum to help us walk through that one.
Yes, and I'm going to ask Pam Robinson, who leads our summer school, to come forward. While she's coming forward, I just want to remind the board that every year, we typically provide just an informational update around summer school, which also serves as public notice that, "Hey, everybody, summer school registration is going to start soon." You've probably had a question, maybe from a patron, about when are the dates? When can we start signing up? Because people are very interested in that. They're trying to make summer plans and get schedules set. And so, we'll hear from Pam, just some highlights for this year's high school summer program, which is really the largest piece of our programming, and then I'll just touch on a few others. And we'll ask, engage in any questions you might have. Go ahead, Pam.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Stavum. Last year, just to start with, we finished with 1,356 students, and this year, we will house the program again at North Star High School. And the starting date for the program will be May 25th, and we will finish on July 7th, and those are comparative dates to last year. We will also have some satellite online classes at all of the high schools, including Brian Focus Program. And the registration materials, including the registration guide, will be out the week of April 4th. And then, the actual registrations at the schools will begin on April 18th, and we'll close the registrations on May 11th.
Don?
Just to clarify, you said 1,356 kids served last summer?
Finished last summer, yes.
Finished last summer.
Each year, we go through a process, and Pam, I'll let you speak to that a little bit, but we don't just do automatically what we did the prior year. So, talk just a little bit about how we determine what's going to be taught at summer school.
Starting at the beginning of each of the quarters and the semesters, I look at failure rates, and I get input from all of the high schools, including administrators and counselors as far as course recommendations. And then I work with the curriculum specialists and J.D. Miller as we design the courses that we're going to offer.
We're also making some expansion around the course offerings we have for ELL students. Our eye is always on the prize of graduation, so we're expanding some of those offerings. We also, if you turn to the second page of your agenda item, we have special education summer programs that happen with students who have extended-year services. That covers a wide range of ages, early childhood services as well. And just as a reminder, as part of our agenda, you'll probably speak to that in just a minute, but we have some things happening right now with the registration for next year that I think Ms. Mumgarth was going to cover. But we also have early childhood services in the summer. And then, you've heard us refer to flex funding in the past. That's primarily what funds programs around reading and math at our elementary sites, and that's really geared towards students who may be slightly below grade level. It's an intervention to move them up to grade level and even some jumpstart kinds of things. We have instrumental vocal music camps and some technology camps, some which are new this summer. And robotics is one of those. We're trying to move some things out to Career Academy so that we have more students who are passing through those hallways so that they've had an experience out there. Questions that you might have for any of us?
Just a one note, when you explain it, you have the two different tuitions. Students who don't necessarily attend Lincoln Public Schools but live in Lincoln Public Schools can reside or can take summer school for those costs, for the reduced cost.
Yes, same as in LPS tuition.
And do we have an idea how many non-Lincoln Public Schools students took part in summer school?
There were 42 that actually lived in the district that were non-LPS students, and we had eight out-of-district students last year.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder, we bring our report back in the fall where we tell you kind of what those numbers look like from year to year. We watch that every year and kind of reflect to make sure that we don't see a drastic drop or increase, maybe from something unexpected. We do know that over time, we gradually have more students that are taking summer school proactively, as well as for credit recovery. And so, we try and maintain a nice balance there of meeting both of those needs. And we think that it's a, it's a pretty dynamic program, and we get really positive feedback around students and, and just really glad that they have that as an opportunity. Not all school districts offer summer school, so we're very fortunate to be able to do that.
Lanny?
Two questions. One, why North Star?
Part of it is just the location, as well as we can divide and use the building without interfering with things like, such as the athletics. We're not intermingling with, you know, students that are in there, like lifting weights or taking, you know, down in the athletic wing for camps and things like that. We can actually shut the doors, and we're almost our own separate area, as well as the parking, and as well as the room. We have almost outgrown North Star. As a matter of fact, we try to leave one wing open so the custodians can start cleaning, and we've already started to move into that wing. Just the numbers and the number of classrooms that we need, North Star is an excellent location.
Thank you. And then, it's my understanding that seniors who complete their graduation requirements at the end of summer school count as on-time graduates? How many of those did we have last year?
We had 125, and we had a celebration on the last day of summer school for those students, and we had 57 students participate in that with their families.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your work on this program.
Thank you.
Do you know, does the city still have the routes to North Star during the summer as they do during the school year?
Yes, we work with their manager to talk about, like, arrival dismissal times and then as far as the routes. And this year, they're going to actually add a route to go closer to Southeast High School to pick up students.
So, parents, no excuses for your kids not using it if they need it. They can even get there on the bus, right?
Correct.
All right. Thank you for the report.
And then, we're also, I think it's worthwhile repeating, because I've had several, also I'm the mother of a high schooler who I can't believe she wants summer school, but repeating the dates, you said the registration information's out April 4th?
April 4th, and we'll register, we'll start the registration in the schools on April 18th.
And then, the summer school itself goes from May 25th to July 7th?
Correct.
And that we can have that many, we have a mini-high school that happens in six weeks. It's phenomenal.
Yes.
The logistics, I applaud you for being able to do that.
Thank you.
We also want to bring up that our early childhood program update, and that we have now started taking applications for that, began on March 1st. I believe that if I can, I don't know, I'll try to give what I know, and then we can say, that we started the process on March 1st, and we already have nearly 400 enrollments. We have about 1,200 slots available, and I think we should say when, we found that just having, people have to come and fill out the registration, and that we needed some Saturday hours, and so we've created some Saturday hours. Am I correct there?
We created some additional opportunities for families that might be working during the school day to come in some off-times evening and Saturdays so that they have another opportunity to come and take care of that.
And that we should also point out that the humans preschool classroom will be relocated to Yisong for next year. So, you know, we're working hard towards accommodating our parents and getting those little ones in because we know how important it is for us to have them in the future. So, that's about it for the committee for this month.
Thank you, Annie. Barbara?
I was wondering, do you stagger summer school registration? Do seniors have priority then?
Yes, we stagger it, current seniors. We want to make sure that if there's a senior that needs a class in order to finish their graduation requirements, they will register that first week. The second week, it will be 11th and 12th graders, and then we open it up to all LPS students.
Okay.
I learned, I learned that by trial and error.
And even can do it when there's a fire and no computer, and kids are trying to run out the door saying, "You know, they just can't get me in." You did a good job even with that, so thank you for what you do. All right, moving on. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, from the Career Academy. Lanny?
Yes, the Career Academy Board met over spring break on March 9th at the Career Academy and noted that staff was taking advantage of the spring break to make some updates to the facility, including adding some sinks to the health sciences area and pouring the puddings for the greenhouse. The greenhouse will be used by the ag and bioscience path and the culinary path. Dr. Hoensie noted that our current enrollment was at 275 students, which includes 150 juniors who could potentially attend next year. And we also celebrated the fact that 56 Career Academy students made the dean's list at Southeast Community College. The requirements for that are at least six credit hours in a quarter, so two classes, and having a 3.5 GPA. So, one of our goals for the Career Academy project was for students to see success at the college level. I think this is a good measurement of that success. I also wanted to give you an update on applications for next fall. As of March 9th, we had received 343 applications, and that included 55 seniors-to-be. So, there was some discussion earlier about seniors who had applied last year getting a second chance. 55 of them have taken advantage of that chance by applying for this year. So far, we've received over 200 acceptance letters from students, and I noted that in addition to LPS students, we have applicants from Pius, Lincoln Lutheran, Lincoln Christian, College View Academy, and a homeschool student. So, looking at next year's potential enrollment for the fall, we could estimate about 120 to 130 returning juniors, 250 new students, including both juniors and seniors, for an enrollment around 375. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. Superintendent's update?
And I would only add on that, Mr. Boswell's report, that we're still recruiting. I mean, Dr. Hoensie's still out there. I know he's making some connections with high school principals and counselors again. And, you know, they're working really, really hard to try to connect kids to what the Career Academy means, and we're going to start, you're going to start seeing some more success stories emerging from there. Kids getting jobs, for example, and internships. So, we're confident that we're on the road. Well, this is the season for testing, so NISA testing is, will be in full bore. It's already begun in some schools. And it's all, it isn't the end-all for us, of course. You know, we don't, we don't say that that is the most important thing that we do, but it is an important experience for all of our students. And we so appreciate our teachers and how much work they put into preparing our kids for those NISA assessments. And we do well. We do well as a district. And, you know, there's always room for improvement, but what's happening in the classroom truly is putting our children in a position to be able to produce their best work. So, as you visit schools or talk to teachers, thank them because this is, it's a pretty tense time. This is a report card for teachers in classrooms and students and families and districts. And, you know, I think we take it very, very seriously. As you know, we have announced a slate of great principals that are going to be taking positions that are vacant within the district. And, you know, I'll call out Mrs. Schwanniger and Dr. Hunter Pertle. They've done a fantastic job with others on our team to prepare students for, or excuse me, leaders for taking predominant positions within the district. You know, we learned a long time ago that while we're always open to outside applicants, and we have a couple of them that are coming in, it's really great leverage for us to be able to use the talent that we have already existing in our, within our district. So, great people that are assuming some leadership helms, and we're expecting great work. Mr. Boswell talked about annexations. You don't have to drive very far in Lincoln to see the growth that's taking place. The Planning Committee heard a couple of meetings ago about 1% growth, a little bit more than 1% growth in the city in terms of population each year that we can look forward to. And, you know, that's certainly bearing out as you drive into the four corners and across the city for that, for that matter. So, it's an exciting problem to have, but as we think about growth and student growth, you know, we know we're going to have more students next year than we had this year, and that trend is going to continue on. Fortunately, the school funding formula recognizes that, although it's for the most part a year in arrears, and that's been, it's put us in a pretty good position to have sound budgets. And I'll just close by saying, Friday, it's a holiday. It's our last holiday of the year, and then we march to the end of the school year. And as we were talking on 10/11 today, Taryn Vanderford, who's got the children in school, she said, "You can't hardly believe it. It seems like we just started the other day." And now, here we are, closing the 15, 16 school year. I conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joel. Monthly financial report? Questions, concerns? All right, we'll move on. We have announcements for upcoming events. Dr. Joel just alluded to March 25th, no school at all levels. April 6th is the Chamber Coffee at 8:00 a.m. in the Chamber Office. April 9th through the 11th is the National School Boards Association Annual Conference in Boston. And April 12th is a board meeting at 6:00 p.m. here at LPSDO. And now is the second time for Public Karma. I do have a blue card here from President Rita Bennett from the Lincoln Education Association.
Yes, I'm short. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks so much to you, to the members of the LPS Board of Education, and thank you as well, Dr. Joel. My name is Rita Bennett, and it is my privilege to represent the members of the Lincoln Education Association. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for supporting the two-year negotiated agreement that our LEA and LPS teams presented to you and that you voted on this evening. I'm really pleased that we can continue to work together in that spirit of collaboration that has always recognized the quality work that's done every single day by our teachers. We believe that the strength of our district really is due to the amazing work that happens every day, one child at a time. every day, one child at a time, and it's further strengthened when our teachers do feel valued, appreciated, supported, and given those tools that they need to continue that work. We know that a collaborative approach really has been the key toward our strong school district, and it really is one that we are able to build, maintain, and grow that strength in our school district, and it really has set our district apart from so many others across the country. As I travel and talk with representatives from other school districts, they don't have the advantage of that collaboration that we have had and that we want to maintain. As Mr. Mayhew alluded to earlier, you do value our teachers, and when they feel valued and supported, it really makes all the difference for them as they are working to make a difference for kids. And so I just want to thank you for the messages of support and the appreciation that you voiced, not just tonight, but at your last meeting as well, and throughout the year, too. I have a classroom poster that is my favorite one, and I thought it was apropos for me to finish with that, and that poster is one that I always pointed out to my students, and it says, "Your teacher's goal is simple, it's to help you reach yours." And I think that your goal and our goal has always been the same, which is to help our students, one student at a time, and by working together, we do make that possible, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we do have a request for closed session from staff. Lanny?
I move that the board recess and go into closed session for items number one, negotiations, number three, litigation, and number seven, legal advice.
Is there a second? Don?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we recess and move into closed sessions for items number one, negotiations, number three, litigations, and number seven, legal advice. April, would you please call the roll? Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yeah.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes, and we are in recess.